Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone. Swan County Board of County Commissioners meeting September 10, 2020 at 5:30 PM for our tentative budget hearing. At this time, if you please stay in our position, he's going to do our dedication and our pledge.
Father, we come again in your name. Thank you for all your blessings and thank you for how you've been good to us, how you promised, fought and saved this far. We thank you for how you've rained and we thank you, God, for being God and God all by yourself. Now we pray, God, tonight that you bless us, give us strength as we take care of the county business, help us to do your will, we need you and we have to lean and depend on you, we have to trust in you. And we pray, Father, that you bless all those that are in elected positions, give it strength, wisdom, knowledge and understanding. Keep us safe, oh God, look over these men today as we conduct business and do it in business right now. Father, we ask thee in all blessings, we ask in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
To the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Fleming. At this time, I would like to welcome Mr. Barry Baker to the podium.
Say, Mr. Chairman, it's all right. Just wanted to welcome you to the tentative budget hearing for 2021. That's where the proposed tentative mileage rate is 9.0000 miles. You have a tentative proposed budget of $91,127,370. The rollback rate is 9.0823 miles and the proposed mileage rate is a 91% decrease from the rollback rate.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Does anyone have any questions? Good call. At this time, will have a vote given for the constitutional officers. Mr. Baker.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, this is where every year our budget is divided into two parts. We have one side which is funded through the county, the other side is funded by the courts. It's where this estate divided for their employees this year. Our employees are considered to be, I guess, we could say no man's land. It's where nobody really wants to hire them. It's where they're on their own. And it's where that, so we did not get funding for our staff. What I'm asking is, I'm in a predicament where that half of my staff would be getting a raise and half is not. What I'm asking is where that we have enough that we can fund the 1%, we can fund about $1,500 of the other portion of the 50 cents per person. But it's where that what I'm asking is if the board would consider one of my core staff, it'd be $20,000 recovered from just my core staff. So this isn't your obligation, but I'm asking for your elected officials to do this thing five hours. So I'm asking for your answer. If you have any questions, I mean, we'd like to answer your questions.
Mr. Chairman, can I speak?
Yes, Mr. Baker.
In years past, we've run into the same issue and, well, when we give raises to one, we've given raises to all, so I'd just ask the board to consider his request, have him in favor of it. That's all.
I have someone on my staff or shared with me that...
That's, that was gonna be my question, because I'm a little bit new to this. How long have we been doing this? I mean, as far as the...
I think there's, this is, this is pretty times that I've actually handled it before. Since I've been working with you. Since I've been working with you.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Baker, our Commissioner.
Easy, fell. Thank you. Thank you. I support this as well. I don't think that we should be giving raises only to part of people, we should give all of them. I've been supporting this as well.
I think it's the pleasure of the Board. Senator Green.
Yes, sir. Sure, we appreciate it. Thank you all very much.
Thanks, sir.
At this time, do we have any other constitutional officers? It's like our favorite sheriff, welcome, sir.
Chairman, I mean, I'm here, I mean, we had talked last meeting, you know, and I was pleased with the outcome. I don't have anything different than we had last time, but I just want to let you know, you know, as far as we talked about, I mean, within, nothing's changed from now until then until now, so I'm good, so I'm not sure. Hopefully, nothing changes on y'all's aspect of it or outlook.
Any questions or comments with it? Chair?
No, I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other constitutional officers here? See them now with the board?
Mr. Chairman, the supervisor elections contacted me today and said that she may have a need for some, an expense item associated with a question about, a legal question. I'm of the opinion that we could cover that in the board's professional services line if that actually occurs. I don't know that anything's going to become of it. I would recommend that we create a separate line for that purpose. For the record, though, I'd like to just ask the board to re-let us handle that if it does happen and utilize the line that we already got in our budget.
I don't have any issue with that.
I don't either.
Pleasure of the Board. See if we're in favor, sir.
Anything else, Mr. Harris, on that?
No, sir.
Moving ahead to outside agencies, do we have any one wishing to speak? Seeing, moving ahead to county departments.
Yes, sir. I see Mr. Brose in the back and we, we did approve the Douglas Center, he may want to say something, I don't know, he may want to tell a thing.
Oh, truly that?
Yes, sir. Please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please, and we welcome you.
Sir. My name is Arthur Robinson. I am the executive director over there at the Powell Police Afterlife League, it's what I share, and we are truly thankful for adding us to the budget here, which is the children in all in need of everything and everything that we can do for them because they are our future. And right now, we have a successful football program that we have started with the CDC guidelines, and they are coming in, signing up for the drugs, and right now, they're inside the gym running through plays, and I broke off to come up here to give you a thank you, guys, for what y'all have done and y'all thinking of us. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you for coming this evening.
I would like to give you my address, 206 Walker Avenue.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Commissioner Fleming, for not letting us overlook this gentleman. Any other outside agencies? Seeing, or move forward, any county departments that have a wish to speak?
Mr. Chairman, I've got a number of items. I don't know when you want to cover these, but I certainly have a list amongst commissioners, and I'd like to cover all of these items, but you tell me when you'd like to do them. I can do it an hour later if that's...
What else do I have to do, Mr. Harris, before you interrupt me?
Go ahead, I'll retract, I won't interrupt you.
No, sir, I'm just directly, seeing no one else wishing to speak, the county departments, I think, will let you interstate that portion.
Okay. I'd like to go through this list with you, but I passed out. I've shared some of these items with you before, told you I was intending to try to keep you updated on them. I'll tell you, we've had multitudes of conference calls on some of these items. Some of them, still, we are not prepared to bring closure to where we know anything absolutely definitive, and that's going to be the case for potentially several months. But let me just start at the top. We had a conversation in your budget workshop about an escrow line for a new building for the Sheriff's Sprintle Division. We know that's going to be several years out. I think it was last year we put a new roof on that building. It was leaking bad. It still, even though the roof doesn't leak, it, the building itself doesn't look any better than it did many, many years back. I had Mark run a quote on having the thing painted, we would supply the paint like we typically do, and I put a number in here of $17,500 if the board wants to consider doing that, just looking at that corner of, a little bit better than it is out there on 136, and buy some time before we have the money to put together and build the building. The second item on here, now, you'll notice that I separated, you've got two sections on this list, you've got the five items at the top would affect either your carry forward ultimately, it would affect your contingency, depending on the timeline, when some of this actually occurs. The second item on there is a payment that I have not settled on yet. The railroad crossing that we are building out there at the Catalas site and the construction of 175th Road, we have to send in certifications on the underground utilities out there. When we started that process, we discovered that Sprint has a major fiber optic line around the parallel of the track. They want us to pay them $45,085.30 to go out there and do something to protect their line. I'm not convinced that we need to pay them that amount of money, and I've been working with the new owner of the railroad, I've talked to their people. Interestingly, apparently CSX, who was the original owner of that rail and that right of way retained the utilities agreements they had with the utilities companies because they're generating annual revenue from that. So I've got to reach out now to CSX, which is a monumental task and it takes some time. I spoke to Mr. Broat about it, he's gonna be working with me on that, because if we can get to the bottom of this question of this $45,000. The state allocation of $300,000 that we received for the construction of 175th cannot be used for this purpose. It really is outside the limits of the crossing itself, so the CDBG can't be used for that purpose either. So I'm gonna continue working on this. The worst-case scenario, scenario, if we have to pay it, that's the dollar amount. So that would come out of either a carry forward if we pay it before the end of the fiscal year, or we come out of a contingency. So I would say if, if we can't get a resolve in the next two weeks, by the time you get to your final budget, we're just gonna have to put a line in there and fund it, because something has to give, we've got to complete that project. In fact, we've got a critical timeline on the expiration of the CDBG grant. The next item on there is an increase that we received from the insurance company for the premium loan, our general outbuilding, our commercial umbrella policy. We received that after the budget workshop, that's $87,706. And then, on your last agenda, I think it was the last one, might have been one prior to that, we brought before you, and if it was approved, the payment of the service fee, this is for the $1.3 billion plus funding that we're receiving from the state revolving fund. There's a 2% service charge for that, and it's $26,959.70, we're gonna have to pay that. And again, there's a question, we don't know if that is gonna have to be invoiced and paid prior to the end of the fiscal year, if it's gonna fall into next year, but it'll have to be paid. The next is a $5,000 expense, we were contacted by one of the judges, apparently there's an IT service that's, at the expense of which is shared by six or seven counties. Our portion of that would be $5,000. That would come from finding forfeiture or something, we can figure that part out later. And then I just penciled in at the bottom of that list, $20,000 for the salary increase for the clerks, employees. So those are the items that have the potential to affect your carry forward or your contingency, and if it's carry forward because of, prior to the end of the fiscal year, then it's gonna affect your contingency later, because it'll be subtracted out.
I have pen, sir.
No, I said I just wrote it in.
Are you sure?
Yeah, what the clerk just gave is I just penciled it in on mine. People are my pen. So the next section of these, again, those, those are the ones that would affect the contingencies that are carried forward. That comes to, I guess, $222,251, is that what you have, Nina? If we were to do all of those things, that's, that's the actual effect, and I can't tell you how that's gonna...
Plus 20.
Yeah. So I can't tell you exactly where that's gonna fall, like with the timing of the fiscal year. The other items, the syncope repair beneath the rail spur, that is my estimate on there of $200,000. My hope is that it's considerably less than that, but we won't know it till they complete that repair. We received the $15,000 expense from the geotechnical engineer, and now the most recent invoice that we received was, I think, $80,000 from the foundation professionals that's actually performing that grouting out there. That was for the west side of that track. They're moving to the east side, so you're $95,000 if you duplicate that, and my hope is that it takes less ground on the east side, but I don't know that, so I'm estimating approximately $200,000. If that occurs, then I would recommend to you that we go to the line that we have in the budget right now for the construction of the new administration building, and we take $200,000 out of there to pay for it. I don't know when that's going to occur. I don't know if it'll finish before the end of the fiscal year, if it's gonna be, I would speculate at this point that any additional invoice that we receive is gonna fall after the adoption of the final budget, but that's the source of funding that I would recommend that we use to satisfy that, because it doesn't affect your contingency line. What that would do then is leave us with the balance of the funding that's on that line, and I would propose in the next fiscal year that we drag our feet on utilizing the balance of that funding to give ourselves time to see where state revenues are gonna fall out next year. If they come in and they're really low and we have issues, and we've got the balance of that money on that line, take care of any shortfalls that we might otherwise experience. Are we clear on that? The next item on here is number seven, the CDBG for rail spur. We've had conference calls with the state, with the Department of Economic Opportunity about this, they said it's a unique situation, that the company filed bankruptcy, they haven't had to deal with this before. What they did say, though, is that if jobs are not ultimately created to bring us into compliance with the terms of that grant, that the county would have to pay those funds back. And they're telling us they're gonna go ahead and pay what we've already incurred in way of expense. The new company, we had a discussion with, I'm trying to remember, I think it was this week, pretty sure it was this week, maybe Tuesday, yeah, I think it was Tuesday, Tuesday. In any event, I'm confident that the company is going to start up, but I don't know what the timing is going to be. So what we are doing in administration is we're having conference calls with DGO, we're gonna talk about extending the terms, the calendar on that grant to give the new company time to hire people, and if they do so, then we would try to, we would want to utilize those jobs as the job creation numbers needed so that we don't have to reimburse any funding. The most recent discussion, it appears that that number, if you wanted to write one down there, my estimate is gonna be close to $300,000. Now, let me just say this, the reason it isn't up in that other section is because we wouldn't have to pay that back right away, and I'm talking about worst-case scenario. I'm working through this thing real hard, trying to ensure that we don't have to pay anything back. Worst-case scenario, if we did, that $300,000, I think we could pay that back over five or six years, so it might be $50,000 a year, which is easier to absorb. So that's what, that was my most recent discussion with them, if all fails, but I think we're gonna be okay. I really feel good about the idea of them extending the calendar for it so that we can utilize the new job trade, jobs created by the new company. And the last item is the one that I mentioned earlier, the professional services for supervisor elections, if we need to go there, so really it's that top numbers one through five, plus the coverage request that had the potential, 200... I calculated, zeroed out, I think it was 220,000, 251, is that right?
It's 202, 251.
20...
202, 251.
92...
25, 2...
20,000.
What was the total?
Yeah, the 182, 250, 182, 250 plus the 20,000.
Okay, 202.
It's 202, 250.
Okay, 202, 250.
On two.
All right, and the new contingency...
374, 49.
Pardon?
374, 49, that's the contingency.
There you go.
If they...
If the board agrees to all of those items plus the clothes.
No, sir, that's all I have. Have any comments or any further questions concerning these items? Don'ts?
I don't have a problem with any of them other than that Sprint mobile. I don't have a problem budgeting for it, but I sure hope over the next year, however long it is, you find them, and I don't feel like that's a fair price on us.
Yeah, we're fighting them, and I don't think it's gonna take a year. I think we can have that resolved in the next, hopefully, the next month, because I absolutely do not believe that we should have to pay any of that.
I don't either, but I'd rather the budget forward than not.
Right, I agree.
What did you say, you know, you mentioned that we couldn't use any of the grant money for that if we had to?
We cannot.
You said cannot, and not even...
In fact, I already inquired about the $300,000 allocation, and you said no, and I know that it sets out, it's outside the limits of the crossing work that's gonna happen itself, so there's no need even to ask about the CDBG.
Any other comments? Most pleasure of the Board.
Mr. Chairman, I'll motion, Mr. Harris.
Got a motion by Commissioner, or Commissioner Fleming, I'm sorry.
What are we approving on one through five?
Yes, sir.
Plus, plus what you already do with the clerk?
Yes.
And with the 20, the 202...
202, 250.
202, 250.
Right.
I second my Commissioner Campbell, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five o.
And Mr. Chairman, the finance department, I'll just work out the details on timing on these things, since we don't really know for sure when some of these are gonna occur. I do have another question, I guess, since you're on this list, that number six, would you agree that we go ahead and utilize $200,000 for that building line, or to pay for that syncope? Because I need a source for that revenue.
I don't have a problem with it.
I don't either, it's gotta come from somewhere, it's gotta be done.
Right.
That doesn't affect your contingency.
Correct.
That's fine.
I need at least three.
I got one, sir.
Okay. So we'll create a line in there for that syncope, we'll leave that line.
At this time, do I have any other questions, comments from the Board, before I, before the public comment?
Say, what comment? Say 202, 250?
202, 250.
Come on, 251.
Well, I took the, I ran, he's got two on here, but he's got 30 cents on one and 70 cents on the other, so it's just rounding, because I can't put cents in there, it's just up to the dollar.
Yeah.
But I can add a dollar, whatever you can put.
Just make sure, do that.
I actually had 251, but 250 sounded better. Always round down, right?
Yes, sir.
What you mean?
Yes, sir.
Okay. At this time, I would like to open for the public comment, do I have anyone wishing to speak? If you please make your way in, please. See, and then I'll close the public comment. Moving on to item number two on our agenda. Board to advise Budget Office to begin change to the main to tentative budget. At this time, we'll have a vote on the tentative mileage rate. Do I have a motion to approve the mileage rate as proposed by the clerk? Got a motion by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Fleming, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five o. At this time, we'll move down to item number two, of two, have, we'll take a vote on the tentative budget. At this time, do I have a motion to approve the tentative budget as proposed by the clerk?
Mr. Chairman, before we take a vote, one change that I think I would like to make, small, I think it's definitely worth it, it's something that we talked about, I've been talking about with some public folks on a regular basis. This mobile home that the county purchased on a taxi sale because of the liens that were against it down in Branford, we've cleaned up the property, and Mr. Harris has requested $20,000 in maintenance, under maintenance line of, to do the work in the trailer. I've got, I've got some people who, who will pay more money in an auction, and they will fight for this piece of property than it's worth, or than it's worth to us, and I would ask that we just remove that line out and just put it on auction, put up their surplus and put up auction. That'd be a form of motion if it's necessary.
I don't have a problem with it, I'll second it.
I have a motion by Commissioner Richardson to remove that line out and place the property at the public auction. I have a second by Commissioner Campbell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye. Motion carries four o.
You still need to vote, vote on the budget.
Sir?
Yes, sir. I guess your assumption then is that you're gonna approve that number over the contingency once that occurs. Right, so we'll have a...
I'll just take that, I'm very interested in contingency. 374, 49, for that.
Is that 449 or 249?
449.
Thank you.
At this time, do I have a motion to approve the tentative budget, as presented?
Who moved it?
Got a motion by Commissioner Hale?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamble, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries five votes.
Just confirming, it's still 91, 127.
I think we just would run that four times.
All of you. Little resolution.
At this time, we'll close the public. Close the budget hearing, do I have a motion to return?
We have a motion.
Mr. Chairman. I want to bring to my, Mr. Harris, the railroad that they're working on. I think three, four years ago, they billed us $125,000 in that, the red. CSX.
CSX bill is for maintenance on the railroad, we never paid it. I argued with them at the time that they could just spring an expense on us, but they don't, they don't know anything yet. We used to budget for it, but we, I think we finally stopped doing that.
Okay, they're working on it now, have they contacted you?
I haven't heard a word. I haven't heard a word, but that's on the state facility, they're working on it. So I know how to return that in a little bit, if it shows up.
Okay.
We have a motion by Commissioner Richardson, have a second?
Yeah, I have a second, please.
Second by Commissioner Gamble, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.